Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Special Session for April 9, 2019. If we could call the roll, please?
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here. Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approve of the agenda. Any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Whiting?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion, 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 discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Agenda has been approved. Item number four, now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come before us and make comment in regard to an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and welcome on an item not on the agenda.
Who are you talking to?
I just saw the bus pull up.
Okay.
All right, I'm hearing none. We will move forward then to the body of our meeting tonight. Item number five, workshop on our 2040 comp plan. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Kerski and his staff are getting ready, just a few points I'd like to make to start off with. First piece is, is that when we, when I first gave direction as to moving into this process, there's a couple of things that I wanted to achieve and essentially after that I got out of the way. But one of the things that I really wanted to see is that it actually was a document that we used and not just from a technical standpoint. A lot of times your comprehensive plans are technically oriented and the technicians, you know, will pull them off the shelf every now and then to take a look and say, oh, we need to do X, Y, and Z with so many acres or whatever. But even more importantly, from an aspirational standpoint, it really needed to be a document that wasn't always saying that we needed so many lines of pipe or so many roads for so many acres, but it was really something that was going to kind of show us the future for the 2040 and those things that we as a staff were going to try to move towards with the organization. The other important piece of it was, is that it wasn't, and I've said this multiple times, it wasn't a bunch of planners in the back room deciding how this was going to work. We spent over eight months going throughout the community to try to find out what people want. And those opinions are deeply ingrained into this document. Matter of fact, they are the 12 big ideas and what's the other portion, Michael? Off the top of my head, I can't remember. No, but the 12 big ideas and the...
Community priorities?
The community priorities. Thank you. So those two pieces of the document reflect the residents' attitudes and ideas as what they wanted to see in the future too. So with that being said, Joe's going to walk us through his presentation and then if you have any questions, please let us know and we'll continue to move this process forward. Before Joe starts, one final thing is that we're not looking to approve the document tonight. All we're doing is sending it to the Met Council. Approval will come at a later date.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor Mars. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. That was a concise preview of what I will be talking about in this presentation.
Can you speak in the mic, Joe?
All right, so Invision Shakopee is back. The last time you saw this document was in September to release it for its six-month review period and we are back again now to authorize to submit to the Met Council. So I have a little short presentation that'll kind of outline how we got here, where we are today, and kind of the next steps that we will be seeing start to move forward from here. All right, so to start, the action requested tonight is to authorize staff to submit the 2040 Comprehensive Plan Invision Shakopee to the Metropolitan Council for their formal review. So first, I'm going to start back at the beginning. Why are we doing a comprehensive plan? What is a comprehensive plan? Why are we here tonight? So at its base, a comprehensive plan is required by state statute to be updated every 10 years from each city in the state. The idea of a comprehensive plan is that it's a community-oriented plan and a forward-thinking plan. So this is a plan, a 2040 plan, that it will, a document that'll be enacted for 10 years. So it's a plan that we need to use to think forward and look forward to where the city will be, not just in 10 years, not just, but also 20 years ahead in 2040. So in that sense, as Mr. Reynolds said earlier, it is an aspirational and visionary document. This is setting the stage for where the city wants to be in the future and in that sense, it needs to be aspirational and kind of looking to the future and how we can change for the future. Additionally, it's a document that offers a menu of options for the city staff, for the city council to actually enact into the future to achieve the goals highlighted throughout the plan. Additionally, it's a holistic city document. So it's a city document that touches upon every aspect of the city, whether that's infrastructure, roads, bridges, sanitary sewer, or that's land use, or housing, or the natural environment, the environment. So it's a document that touches upon every aspect the city government currently does. Finally, it's also a communications and marketing tool. So this is a tool that kind of shows Shakopee out to the rest of the world. It's a document that shows where Shakopee is today and also where it wants to be in the future. So for prospective residents, prospective business owners who maybe like to locate in the city, this is a document that is kind of a tool for the city to say, come here, come to Shakopee, we're growing, this is our vision for the future. And if you're on board with that, you would love it here. So Invision Shakopee kind of was a change in how the planning process for comprehensive plans worked for the city of Shakopee in the past. So the planning process, the community engagement aspect of it was much more thorough, which I'll go in in a little bit. We, it was, as Mr. Reynolds said, an eight-month process and even longer. This is a continual engagement process throughout this entire two-year process at this point. So that, and initially, the document form and organization is different from previous plans. This plan is much more visual, much more graphical, much more interactive. So it's easier for the general public to read through and understand what the city does, where it wants to go, and what the future looks like. In that sense, then, the role of the plan has changed. So previously, the role of the previous comp plan was something that says, you know, this is where the house, this is where this house is going to be, this is where that building is going to be. And it was something done every 10 years and kind of sit down and it was pushed down and, you know, forgotten until something came up and that needed to be worked on. That is not the expectation for Invision Shakopee. And with that, the tone of the document, again, is a little, is different than previous comp plans. So this document has a more, again, inclusive, community-oriented, easier-to-understand plan that someone could, anyone could pick up and read and understand what, where the city is and where it's going. And with that, then, the design. So previous comp plans were more text-heavy. They were text, maybe a map, maybe a graph, rinse and repeat for X amount of pages. Invision Shakopee is much more of a flow from one end to the other and kind of keeping that all connected, keeping the plan itself connected to engagement ideas and these big ideas that kind of flow throughout the entire plan. And finally, the information trends and relevancy. So the information presented here maybe is similar to what a previous comprehensive plan is, but again, it's presented in a different way, a little more accessible way that you can understand. And relevancy, so this is a document that is intended to be alive for 10 years. It's not a document that we intend to just sit down after this process and maybe 10 years we come back to. This is a document that'll stay alive throughout the entire 10-year period and evolve with the city. So the city today will not be the city we see in 2030 and we understand that. And so this document shouldn't be just what it is today. It should evolve with the city. So a little bit more on the plan role. So I think as Mr. Reynolds was saying earlier, this is a plan that is looking beyond just the what and where and kind of the how, when, and why. So why are we putting this here? When are we putting this here? And how are we putting this here? I think it's more important to include than just saying this will be here this year, blank. So this is kind of a way, segue into the, an education tool again. So having this tool be more accessible to the public really allows them to see, get a look into how city planning really works. A lot of times, you know, city planning is something that happens in back rooms and most people don't really understand the process. The intent of Invision Shakopee is to kind of make that process, bring that out in the light and make it more clear to residents of the city and give them ownership of this document as well. An idea of Invision Shakopee also is to build in flexibility. So again, that menu of options. So this is a document that has many different recommendations to achieve goals that are set out throughout the plan. And so the idea here is to, again, if something, you know, if something doesn't work, then another thing could work, something else could work, just a flexible document that could work with many different ideas, alternatives, and aspirations. And this document also establishes clear priorities for the city to move forward. This, again, is a document that takes all of this engagement, all of this community effort, and into one document that sets the community on a path forward for the next 10 years. And that was a clear priority for a lot of residents. I think a lot of residents previously seen a lot of haphazard development, in some cases, development for development's sake. This document is kind of, is, more focuses that priority and change into areas that'll aid the city in the future. And again, finally, keeping it alive. So this is a document we intend to bring back annually for discussion, review, update, report about where we are that year and where we're looking to go for the next year. So this is something you will be seeing over and over again for the next 10 years to keep this document alive and, you know, evolve with the city. So where are we in the plan process? So again, this is a, we're pushing into a two-year-long process now. We are in April 2019, began in June of 2017. We're kind of nearing the end here. So that's why we're here today, just showing you that we are getting close to adoption. So I want to go a little bit about the community engagement of this plan. So Invision Shakopee really represented a significant and different engagement methods into the planning process. Over 3,000 responses from residents, visitors, businesses, employees really went in this plan. The engagement was robust and diverse and wide. And I think that engagement really comes out in the actual document itself. It's a document that looks a lot different than neighboring communities' documents and I think it's a unique aspect of Shakopee that really comes out in it. This is a large page of text, but it's just kind of to hammer home the point of that there was a lot of community engagement. So we had nine community events attended. That could, those ranged from formal city events to informal events that took place, like Rhythm on the Rails. Just having a presence there and collecting information from all a wide, wide audience really helped to get a wider group of ideas into this plan. In addition, focus group interviews. So there was 15 focus groups which actually gave input into this plan. They arranged, again, from Shakopee schools and city staff in Scott County, all the way to the arts and faith community. So this is, these focus group interviews were wide and varied and really do represent a holistic view of the city today. In addition to that, there's other engagement online. So Invision Shakopee has been updated throughout the entire process and still live. Social media posts, again, throughout the entire process have been engaged with and posted throughout. Invision Shakopee actually had three separate community workshop events just for Invision Shakopee. I think that's important. So gathering information specifically for the plan, residents knowing what they're here to do. In addition, surveys. So the National Citizen Survey in 2016 was kind of one of that baseline of citizens' input into the plan. City staff survey, there's a high school student survey. So high school students are obviously the future of this city and they're, they will be adults in 10 years and so it's important to get their input as well. In addition, local employers were surveyed. Also, 23 plan champions were highlighted and identified and they went out there and engaged the community on their own and brought back their own reports for staff to incorporate in this plan. Finally, Scott County also did their own engagement for their comprehensive plan and looking in their engagement report and their engagement efforts, it really did kind of bring home a similar set of ideals for the county as a whole. And then those reports really helped reinforce what we saw in Invision Shakopee and to really help reinforce our plan and showing that we are not only aligned with the community of Shakopee, but also the entire Scott County community. So what does all this engagement mean? So first, it led us to our community priorities. So there were nine priorities which were pulled out of this engagement process. First, establish a strategic direction. Next, improve communication and collaboration. Build on Shakopee's sense of community. Improve the appearance of the community. Maintain a strong and diverse economy. Revitalize downtown. I think that's a theme we've seen for many, many years now. Expand housing options. Again, that's another theme that's been around for a long time and it's only gotten more pressing. Enhance the transportation system. Connect people with parks, trails, and amenities. And finally, the last priority is a, might be the most important priority. So none of these other priorities can really be accomplished if the city does not maintain its fiscal stability. So that is something that is just vital to be there and is an important priority. So then these priorities then led directly to our big ideas, as we mentioned earlier. So there's 12 big ideas which came from elements of those priorities. So create a fresh impression. Rediscover the river. Enhance economic clusters. Diversify housing options. Revitalize First Avenue. Knit the community together. Connect people to nature. Foster civic life and civic spaces. Position for the new economy. Spark the startup culture. Support regional transportation. And then finally, celebrate big fun. So the S idea maybe doesn't have any clear, clear community priorities, but being home to Valley Fair and being home to Canterbury Park, Mystic Lake Casino, the rent fair. It's the idea of, you know, capitalizing on a strength of Shakopee already. So that's, that's also an important aspect of this comp plan as well. So then those community priorities, which led to the big ideas, which then led to our plan basics and policies. So there are five sections of the plan divided into 13 elements, which are then further divided into 56 goals. So for the economic development section, then that element is economic competitiveness for the community environment. Then you are split down to housing, quality of life, and neighborhoods and sense of place. The built environment is then divided into land use, transportation, and then infrastructure. The natural environment is then divided into parks and trails and open space, natural resources, and resilience. And then finally, governance is split between city administration, communication, and finance. So why all of this? Why are we here today, really? The big question is because of this. So Shakopee has grown immensely over the last 20 to 30 years and it will continue to do so. So from the change, the expected change from 2010 to 2040 is adding 26,000 new residents, 9,000 new households, and 14,000 new jobs in the city. And so this document really is guiding the city through this continued growth process as it continues to mature as a city and as part of the region. So why are we here today? So the six-month review period ended at the end of March. So that was from late September when it was, when city council authorized the release, for staff to release it to affected adjacent jurisdictions to March 22 of this year. So in that process, staff notified 23 adjacent agencies and jurisdictions. From those 23, we received nine written responses from adjacent jurisdictions and two additional comments from other entities. All responses were generally positive of Invision Shakopee. We had no real negative comments about the document that was read. And of those nine responses, five responses indicated no further comment. And the remainder of the responses mainly focused on typos or omissions from the text. Staff has addressed those omissions and typos in the latest draft that you have here today. Finally, staff also submitted to the Met Council a preliminary review and thankfully, we did. We received 13 pages of written comments from the Metropolitan Council, which on every section of the plan, it was a very comprehensive review. And I'm glad we did it in January and not in May. I think that would have slowed our process down a little bit. So a little bit more on the responses. So again, a majority of the meaningful revisions from the September edition of the draft were done in response to Met Council requirements per their preliminary review dated in January. But additionally, staff received comments from a group called All Parks Alliance for Change, which is an advocacy organization for manufactured housing parks, which Shakopee has one and there are two additional in Jackson Township. In response, staff revised the housing section to specifically discuss manufactured housing within Shakopee and Jackson Township. That did seem to be something that was missing in the previous edition, so that has been added as a discussion section. In addition, a local landowner in Jackson Township also submitted written comments. He was, he was concerned about development of his parcel in the future. Staff has discussed further with him and that his comment has been addressed sufficiently. So I'm going to kind of go through a few notable revisions from the previous draft. So many discussion sections were either created new or revised per Met Council comments. In transportation, an aviation discussion was included. The city of Shakopee is within the Flying Cloud Airport's aviation air zoning area and so that was something that was required from the Met Council to discuss. An expanded transit discussion. So the Met Council is looking for discussion about Shakopee's transit facilities, specifically its Park and Rise and Marshall Transit Center and it's a bus-only shoulder lanes on 169 and County Road 21. In addition, the roadway classification has been revised. Staff discussed internally and revised the roadway classifications for the future roadway system. In addition, regional park and trail assets in community was expanded upon. So the Metropolitan Council was looking for a more thorough discussion about regional trail alignments and search corridors which exist within Shakopee and that has been added. An aggregate resources discussion was also added per requirement. So previously, there was not a discussion about potential aggregate resources within the city and within Jackson Township. So that's been added as a discussion to indicate cities' policies upon how mineral extraction can work with future built-up land use on those sites. Again, expanded housing discussion. So add, addition of the manufactured housing and additional discussion on other affordable housing in the city. Infrastructure section was also updated. So since the previous draft of the comp plan was released, the sanitary sewer master plan and surface water master plans were released, as was seen a couple of months ago. So now those are now, so now the comp plan is now aligned with those plans and better and clear, in a more clearer way. In addition, the drinking water section, Shakopee Public Utilities is handling that and staff has been discussing with them revisions that we have required based upon our review of their plan, that their revisions are forthcoming. In addition to discussion revisions, graphics and maps were revised. So over 30 maps have been revised or newly created from the previous draft of the plan. A few big idea images, specifically the First Avenue corridor and the Marshall Road Transit Center, images are being reworked by our consultant MKSK right now. Those will be coming out soon. And additional multiple tables, figures, and images have been added or revised from the previous section. All of that is highlighted in the part of the memo, the five-page memo highlighting all the previous, all the changes done within the plan. So one of the bigger changes in this draft of the plan is the land use map. So following some comments and requirements from the Metropolitan Council, this, the land use map has been updated quite a bit, just a few overarching changes. So now, so previously, the land use designations didn't quite follow legal parcel boundaries for parcels within the city. Staff and the Met Council both noticed that under thorough review and that has been addressed and fixed. So now all parcel, all land use designations fit parcel lines. So in the future, we won't have any issues of someone trying to build a house on a parcel that has a sliver of open space on it and we'd have to do a comprehensive plan amendment. That wouldn't be a very good problem. So that has been fixed. In addition, Louisville Township has been removed from land use guiding. So the Met Council commented that if the city does not have an orderly annexation agreement with the township, we do not have any legal jurisdiction over their land use. So that has now been pulled out of the future land use map. In addition to that, on the same idea, the Shakopee, Meadowwakka, and Sioux land is no longer guided in the future as well. So previously, in the 2030 plan, it was marked as Shakopee, Meadowwakka, and Sioux land in property or in trust. And so that has been retained for this. Since most trust land is not under city jurisdiction, it is something that we do not have jurisdiction over, so we cannot guide their land. In addition, the Windermere area has been updated. It's highlighted on the map here. So the Windermere area previously was not, again, parcel-sensitive and is one of the areas where the most change has happened, the most new parcels have been created, roads have been built there. And so that, so this map now reflects that reality. And finally, some changes in property guiding in certain areas. After a thorough staff review, I'll highlight some of them on here. So the 42 Marshall Road intersection area was previously guided as mixed residential. With new county road projects, that guiding didn't really work because they were moving all access to 42 on those parcels. And so that has now been guided down to suburban residential to kind of fit in with the rest of the character of that area. The Howar 169 property is also been guided down to suburban residential. It was previously mixed residential. The densities were just a little high for that area. Market forces really made it clear to staff that you're probably unlikely to see six-plus units an acre on that large of a property. So that is now suburban residential again, which will match more the character of the area. Riverfront properties, so that, that's the circle up at the top there. So those are previously guided as mixed-use corridor. They've now been guided to old Shakopee residential. A lot of those parcels have a lot of floodplain issues and burdens on them, which really doesn't allow for a developer to dig for a project. And so having a guiding where you have potentially commercial uses or higher-density residential uses just really didn't make any sense there and couldn't really work. And so those have been guided down now to old Shakopee residential, a lower density. In addition, our four properties, so that would be our Hy-Vee apartment building, the Southbridge apartment buildings, those have been reguided as mixed residential. So those are solely, purely residential buildings. They aren't mixed-use projects. So they previously were guided under mixed use, but now they are guided under mixed residential. So they are now covered as residential properties. And finally, again, the West End area has been just cleaned up a little bit again to kind of fit those parcel lines and more expecting what we're going to see in the future. So next, I'm going to go through these land use categories that I've kind of been rattling off here for a minute, just so we get an idea of what I'm exactly talking about. So the Downtown Business District would be roughly five square blocks of downtown. So the China Traditional Area, you think of downtown business area. There's a circle on this page.
A question?
135.
135? All right. Get a little better view of it. Thank you. Sorry about that.
A question? Sorry? Okay. On the Downtown Business District, so in realizing existing market forces today, we, staff has guided... staff has guided, has up-guided the Downtown Business District from 125 units an acre to 150 units per acre. Staff has really seen a much more higher demand for one-bedroom and studio apartments, and so these, those are usually much smaller area, and so apartment buildings in downtown could see higher density, and so staff has upped the density guiding for the Downtown Business District area. In addition, the other downtown land use area, Downtown Riverfront, so that's the, about roughly six riverfront adjacent blocks. So both these blocks are really meant to hold higher-density residential, and are really a mix of uses of commercial and residential and retail, and really be our pedestrian-oriented area of town. So next is the Downtown Transition Areas. So that is the literal downtown transition category, which covers much of the area surrounding downtown land uses. And in addition, the Old Shakopee Neighborhood, which kind, which covers a lot of the older residential, traditional, gridded layout neighborhood areas. And so these land use guidance are really here to embrace kind of a diversity of housing stocks. Today, there already exists many smaller apartment buildings, attached buildings, older single-family homes, all living, all located next to each other throughout the entire area. And so the idea of these categories is to kind of embrace that housing diversity and kind of build upon that. And also to create more of a buffer from the downtown land uses to the lower-density suburban residential land uses further south. Next, we'll look at the, the commercial.
I have a question.
Question?
The downtown transition, where is that on this land use map?
So downtown transition on this map, it's, can be difficult to see here. It's the slightly darker brown. It's, it covers mainly the Shakopee or the Scott County Government Center, moving towards the Rar Campus, those blocks there. If you could see my mouse. I can't.
Right here, this little section right here.
Right there. It's roughly about 10 to 12 square blocks running from the Rar Campus to downtown to the Scott County Government Center.
They look the same color to me all the way up to here.
Yep, they do. They do. Yeah, just light.
I think he stopped on here.
He's circling in up there.
Councilmember, if you all look, you can see where the Scott County is now institutional. It's like three dark blue, light blue, kind of where the cursor is right now. That downtown transition zone is north of there.
Staff can certainly update the coloring to make it more clear.
Is it institutional?
Yeah, so the Scott County is the three blue blocks that are together, and then you'll see to the left and to the right of it is that kind of downtown transitional color.
You can't hardly tell, but it's there.
Maybe we can clean that up. Change colors or something.
Gotta use, what do you call it, colors, contrasting colors next to each other. All right, continue, Zari.
Thank you, noted. I will change the color, thank you. So next, we'll be looking at the commercial designations. So for the mixed-use commercial corridor, this is a category that will run down First Avenue and Marshall Road Avenue, Marshall Road. So this, the intent here is to maintain that commercial character while opening up some land use possibilities for potential mixed-use projects, residential with commercial on the bottom. And for the commercial use, and the mixed-use commercial center, that area mostly covers our existing freeway interchange commercial areas, think 69, 169, Marystown Road, 169, Marshall Road, 169, the South Bridge area, and then also the 41, 169, future interchange in Jackson Township. So these land use categories generally allow for, you know, incremental density increases of commercial areas in the city, and again, allows for a more limited mix of uses in these areas, and to change the character from just remote, predominantly single-story, larger strip malls or larger retail developments.
Question? On your mixed-use commercial corridor, I'm trying to find it on the map here. Don't have spelled out on the map like that.
Both sides of Marshall from...
It's like broken.
What color are we talking? Mixed-use corridor?
Yeah.
So it's, it's, there's a center, mixed-use center and misuse corridor. Okay.
Gentlemen, would it be actually possible in the plan itself to have this map blown up to like a 17-inch that can fold in, so it'll allow a little more definition on the map itself?
That would be good.
Yeah, we can do that.
To council and mayor and Mr. Reynolds, so we will be including a blown-up version with parcels on it per Met Council requirements. So the plan document itself is an eight-and-a-half by 11, but there will be likely either 11 by 17 or a larger version within the plan as well, which will include also parcel lines for legal reasons. Thank you. And I apologize for the map. This is the most clear I could get it on PowerPoint, unfortunately, so.
Yeah, this is a huge file, so it doesn't...
Next, we'll be moving into our industrial and mixed employment center. So the industrial designation in the, in Invision Shakopee is mainly for the more heavy industrial users, so the industrial category will be more limited in scope. It'll be mainly around the Highway 101 corridor, where you have those kind of heavier industrial uses, exterior storage uses. And then for areas like the Valley Green Business Park area, those will now be categorized as mixed employment center. So mixed employment center is gonna be the most wide-ranging employment category in the plan. So this will cover anything from your light industrial, manufacturing, warehouse, distribution, office, and even higher education. So this will be the most dynamic land use designation in the plan. And in addition, there is a, there is also secondary uses allowed in this plan, so it is also a mixed-use area and potentially could allow for some potential housing as well. Just something to point out for that. So next, we'll be looking at the mixed residential category. So this is kind of the most flexible and wide-ranging residential category in the plan. I have it noted on here that the density levels have been changed from 6 to 20 to 6 to 30 dwellings per acre. The reason of that is to cover, again, existing residential properties like the Hy-Vee property and the South Bridge apartment properties, which have higher densities than 20 units per acre. And so that was, that change was made. And also was suburban edge residential. So City Council and staff noted both that you cannot have a land use density of zero for residential property. So that was changed from 0 to 0.01, and again, from 1 to 3. So the density was added from 1 to 3 units per acre. The reason why that was, if we go back to our land use map, if we can, there's a lot of properties that are existing today that were guided as suburban edge residential, but were over one unit per acre, whether they're a half-acre lot or a three-quarter acre lot. And so the one, up to one unit per acre would not cover them. So this was changed to cover those properties, and in addition, this change was made to then create a full spectrum of density guiding for land, for residential land use. So now it goes from the lowest to the highest in a, in a clear spectrum of density levels, instead of going from 0 to 1, to 3 to 6, to so on and so forth. So this gives you a more clear line between the lowest to the highest density in the city. Next, we'll be looking at suburban residential and rural transition. So suburban residential, again, is that backbone residential designation. In this plan, this is the most widespread land use category in the city. At 15% of the total land area will be suburban residential. And that, again, covers existing regular, traditional suburban developments, in addition to places we anticipate that to continue. Rural transition is then an idea that rural transition will be more of your agricultural, homestead, farmstead land use. This will be more kept down at the southern end of the city alongside a lot of the SMSC land on the south end of the, of the city. City doesn't really anticipate much widespread development in this area for any sort of more intense housing uses, and felt that the rural transition was an appropriate land use for this area. The entertainment land uses, so entertainment generally is going to be the same for Valley Fair and Canterbury. There are some, a few notable differences. That being Canterbury is envisioned to be a much more mixed-use development area with offices, residential, retail, in addition to the Canterbury Park itself. Valley Fair is envisioned more to remain as it is today, and so they have different design guidelines throughout for their development for either of those. Finally, the, the rest of the land use category, so parks, obviously would be city parks. Open space is areas either owned by the city or private property that has been designated as open space to remain as green space. Railroad is utilized for, again, the railroad area. Rightsway is for city, city land, whether that's roadways, trails, park and ride facilities. Utilities is utilized for water towers, for power stations, for the water treatment plant, utility uses. And institution is then utilized for municipal buildings, county buildings, and churches, and buildings that really don't fit under any other sort of category. And to kind of put all that together, so a table that was staff added to the comp plan really kind of outlines how the existing use categories translate into the planned use categories. So to say that, this, this kind of showing that agriculture use won't necessarily disappear in the city, it's just now reclassified as rural transition. Same with business park, it's now known as mixed employment center. Commercial highway is now known as mixed commercial, mixed-use commercial center, so on and so forth. This, this table kind of just outlines the changes and how they're gonna look from today to 2040 as, as the city anticipates growth throughout the city. Additionally, another revision made was the development phasing map. So the development phasing map previously didn't cover all areas which the city anticipated residential growth. So there has been some changes, notably Area 26 on this map in Jackson Township. It was, it's been guided as suburban residential, and the Metropolitan Council expected the city to discuss and to include that in their expected residential development, whether...
What page is that?
You can, yeah, Councilmember Lehman, you can find this on page 130.
Thank you.
And so, this, this has just been slightly revised just to reflect all areas that the city anticipates development, and that's a requirement the Met Council is looking for. So in addition to this, then the table has been revised.
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you go back to that a little time? It has along with it the development phasing.
Councilmember, correct.
And I am trying to find number 16 on there. Greenway Quaries.
Councilmember Lehman, so the Greenway Quaries, that is, well, actually, where the Jackson Township label is, I think that one might have got missed. So it's the, it's the further out, closer to the border of Chaska there. It's, it was not labeled, thank you for pointing...
Show me on the map over there, little cursor maybe I can...
Yeah. If you can, can you see my cursor?
That's number 16.
Yeah, so I missed that. We, staff missed that one. We will add that. Thank you for pointing that out.
I have a question.
Councilmember Lehman?
Do you have redevelopment for old Shakopee up to 10th Avenue or past 10th Avenue?
Could you repeat that, sorry?
I'm looking at this map, yep, and the purple shade is infill redevelopment, right?
Mm-hmm.
So all of old Shakopee is for infill and redevelopment?
So, Councilmember Lehman, the, the term infill redevelopment is just, imagine an area that is looking, that there could be infill opportunities, so there are empty, there are some empty parcels throughout the area, and possible redevelopment opportunities. It's not labeling that redevelopment will wholesale happen for every property in the entire area, it's just identifying as a place that this could happen and planning for it in the future. If you look at the development table for it, you can see old Shakopee has 10 units per decade, so it would be limited, very limited. It is map ID Area 10 on the table.
Is that telling me 10 houses are gonna get tore down and rebuilt?
So these are just estimates. These are estimates that we are utilizing. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future. This, the estimate of possibly 10 new units could be added in this area per decade.
Of that 10, some of them might be a new house getting built on an empty lot?
Possibly.
A few of them.
In addition, so yeah, so this table has then been redone to address these issues and also added acreage to the 10-year expected development as per the Met Council requirements. They need units and acreage expected. So that leads us to our next steps. So here, April 2019, planning, we, staff went to Planning Commission last Thursday for recommendation, and today are at the City Council for authorization for submission to the Met Council. So on 4-4, the Planning Commission recommended approval, and then tonight's meeting. So after this, the Met Council review process, so that is 120-day process once they deem the plan to be complete for review. So that is not a guarantee, so this is a process, an iterative process with possible negotiation with the Met Council and possible revisions through this period. So what you see here today might not be what you see in August or September when this comes back for, for final approval and adoption. Any changes, of course, will be noted, and you will be kept abreast of all of this. So again, to follow this process then would be plan adoption and implementation, which we'll talk a bit about. So these next couple of slides will be kind of the highest priority recommendations outlined in the comp plan and what to expect in the next year from today. So again, following adoption later this year, these are the highest priority recommendations in the comp plan. So first, the zoning code update. So the city is required by statute to align the zoning code with the comprehensive plan within nine months after adoption. This will include zoning design standards, permitted uses, and subdivision design standards. So this will be a pretty large change in the zoning code, because again, Invision Shakopee is a pretty big change from comp plans in the past. So that is something that will be coming likely soon after adoption within that nine months. Additionally, Parks and Trails Master Plan is currently under work, and this is something you'll be seeing more of in the future. This includes identifying priority gaps in the sidewalk and trail network, and identifying park locations and possible improvements throughout the city. And additionally, the, an alternative urban area review, an AUAR, in the West End and Jackson Township is currently under study. So that includes the entire area of Jackson Township and parts of Shakopee in the West End. That'll include traffic analysis, that'll include land use analysis, environmental analysis. It's a whole holistic wholesale planning review for the entire area, so future developments do not need to go through single planning processes highlighting all of these issues. This will be kind of done, and this AUAR, and kind of help to, not speed up, but you know, incorporate more future land use development changes and make that little process a little bit more...
Before you move forward, so, we, let's say that we approve this tonight to send to the Met Council, and then they, they spend time reviewing it and, and give it back to us, and then we accept that. Then you're saying the zoning standards start then after adoption at that time?
Mayor Myers.
To update the zoning?
Correct.
And then my next two questions, actually, our Park and Trail Master Plan will not be completed, obviously, to go into this and the AUAR as well. So it's at the Met Council with these other two big pieces here. Then do we, if the Met Council gives it back to us and we approve it, then do we amend our comp plan and slide those two pieces in, whatever pieces are in there?
Mayor, that's correct. So they actually requested as part of their initial review, the...
So they actually requested as part of their initial review, the A U A R because of the orderly annexation agreement we have at Jackson Township, they were concerned about sewer, water, and stormwater capacity, so that's a separate process that will not be amended in the comp plan, so that basically, as Mr. Whiting said, will allow development that moves forward, that stays in compliance with the plan, will not have to go through an EAW or EIS, and I think it's for five or six years, so that will allow them to proceed because the Met Council will have already signed off on that. The Parks and Trails Master Plan, when that's completed, will just be amended to this plan, it's, it's, the Met Council is aware that, I think that the City Council wanted to do a much more in-depth study, we've met their minimum requirements, and then this will be, when we come back for final adoption, it'll be combined. So it'll be an appendix, just like the sewer and water and stormwater plans are.
Okay. Continue, or Councilmember Lehman?
For asking questions. When I look at a bunch of these corridors, or, I don't know what, whatever you call them, different areas, downtown transition, mixed-use corridor, employment centers, they have mixed uses, you could either do residential, or I'm assuming you can do, like in the mixed-use commercial corridor, you could put up a commercial establishment, or you could put up a residential building, right?
Councilmember Lehman, correct.
So, and most of the districts or areas are like that, so how do you put together some kind of an accurate population forecast when you don't know what the end use is really going to be? And then to go a step further, when you do a comp plan update, the purpose of that update is to try to plan for the infrastructure for the future. And if you don't know if it's going to be mostly residential in these areas at these densities, or if it's going to be commercial uses, or whatever else the other uses are allowed, how do you accurately plan for the infrastructure side of it?
So Mayor and Council, I think we had a number of other consultants working on this kind of in the background, so H R and A took a look at the market over the next, you know, it's all best guess for the next 20 years, but based on this, they were able to extrapolate what past demand has been and what the future demand could be, based on a range of mixes. So if you look at sewer water capacity, things like that, they don't really change tremendously from an apartment building to industrial or a commercial, all of those things are pretty much balanced. I think the biggest issue they've looked at is traffic, and I think that we are blessed with pretty large capacity, kind of in Old Shakopee and the surrounding areas, I think that was the one red flag that was raised by the Met Council, that out in the West End, who knows what that capacity could be, and that's the really area you're going to probably see the most development over the next 10 to 20 years. And so that's why we're doing the A U A R, because they were concerned that, given the amount of acreage you're talking about, it's a very large area, you could see potentially some major kind of super employers, you could see more residential, you could see a lot more single family, and hence the reason, based on the projections we have here, they asked for the A U R, A U A R, to prove out that we had the sewer, stormwater, and traffic capacity. I think the good news is, we have the sewer capacity, we have the stormwater figured out, the traffic, a lot of that's out of our control because it's MinDOT or county roads, and so they're working with them right now on those final numbers. And I think some of the comments that we sent back to Shakopee Public Utilities concerned the density they had shown in their water versus the reality of what's happening today, never mind in the future, and so we've asked them to take a look at their water plan to make sure it complies with the projected population increases. I think they had shown in their water plan the pumping station that's going to be built in the next few weeks, and one water tower, and they're going to have to go back and prove that out. There's also, as part of the West End A U A R, they're also looking at electrical load capacity, and I think Spuck has realized that they're going to need a substation near or adjacent to the existing Excel Substation, so they're actually working in there right now because they see with the potential major employment sector coming along 169, that there's going to be a need for a lot of power in that area, and so Spuck's working on that right now.
The reason I bring it up is because we know 169 doesn't have the capacity needed currently, and if we're going to add all this to it, it's only making it worse. And 41, God knows when that's ever, I'll be dead before that new river crossing gets built. 101, granted that old, great improvement for that land bridge because it would have been flooded without it, but until they get up the hill, both directions, flying cloud in all the way up to Chan Hassan to 5, we're pretty locked, and, you know, this plan is pretty intensive, population with the densities. If you don't have any ability to move back and forth across this river, we're setting ourselves up for a mess.
So I think Mayor and Council, one of the goals, not only this plan but the county, is to get more people working here, so there's not $400,000 or $500 million available right now to go and build that extra river capacity, so the big interchange has been talked about for years, by 41 is not going to happen anytime soon. So if you look at from a, there's capacity and the A U A R is looking at that, but I believe there is capacity on 169 down on that end, so that, that actually, part of that town is not that busy, particularly for truck traffic, so if you look at, one of the notes from the Met Council was to look at our transportation quarters, I think that 101 to 169 is going to become a larger transportation quarter, particularly with, hopefully, the development of some industrial, light industrial, business park uses down in this area, you can just take that and then take it up to 101, past the old shopping mall, and through downtown, and there's a significant amount of capacity on that area. And I think the A U A R is looking pretty carefully at those traffic counts, I mean, our goal, I think, long-term as a community, and something for Council to discuss short and mid-range, is how do we attract employers here that are going to employ the people that live here?
Another thing we should probably point out in the transportation analysis is the option to go from 101 southbound on 169. You can't, you can't make that movement.
101 south where?
You can't take 101 to 169 and go southbound on 169.
Oh, yeah, that was negotiated back when they did it.
Right, and it's just, it's not going to be there, because there's no room to put it there, and the train bridge is right there.
Oh, right.
So, all your traffic patterns have to take that into consideration, and they probably don't even think about these little things, but they need to be.
Well, I think that, you know, I think that we are trying to develop, either in Scott County and in Shakopee, the, a livable, workable community, right, where you don't leave. I think we have a great start already, I think the numbers are in the low twenties, both for Shakopee residents and Scott County, but, you know, for your highway corridor, I pulled out these two maps, current traffic ADTs for the major highways, both current and then the 40, and, you know, 169 goes from 94,000 to 120, you talked about 101 alongside the hill, that's under construction, that's at 19,000 going to 34. When we look at this, though, Shakopee is not the only impact, because over here, when we, you know, there, I take that every day on the apex of 169 and 101, and, you know, I see traffic coming up from 21 and that, and that's, that's not good, but I see headlights coming from Savage, Prior Lake. Also, I think that upside the hill will help, but I think that as we've moved with the infrastructure that we've gotten from MinDOT over the years, 10-plus years ago, the only interchange that was really used was Marshall, right? And we, we had a lot of congestion there, because that was the center, right, with the grocery store there and stuff, but since then, Canterbury has become a much more functionable interchange, and that helped with the 17th Avenue, so you could kind of come and come around the backside. Also, with the West End, Marystown, which I lived by, 10 years ago, that interchange was never used, right? No one used it, or, the old mall had died, there was no traffic, right? But now you look at it, and, and there's a lot more traffic, so I've said for years that I think at least coming in, getting out of the community part, we have better balance today. But when we go up 169, we have the influx of four or five or six communities coming together at a choke point that you've been working on. And I think that you're going to see that slightly improve with the 41-169 area, although they will have their own problems, because you're going to still drive into 41 right into a, right into a community where you're going to need to slow down, and, and that will get backed up as well, so, right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember.
Now, aren't these 2040 plans on a regional scope, kind of the process to develop, you know, ideas for creating more capacity on roads and things?
You'd think that the Met Council would be looking at this and then going to MinDOT, and you take Savages, you take the other communities down the line, you take Chaskin, you know, and now there, you know, we're looking at Shakopee, right?
But Chask is growing.
They're looking like, let's put all these maps together, and, and I would hope they're looking at that and going, oh, you know, we need to do something, let's allocate some dollars, and...
That's the idea.
From the state level, absolutely.
So, so Mayor and Council, I mean, one of the big changes in this comp plan is Scott County did the transportation analysis, because they said, it doesn't make any sense for all the cities in the county in a vacuum to do their own transportation planning, because we need to see what the long-range impact is on all of the roads. And so the numbers that you see, they took our land use and then put it in the Scott County transportation model, and I think what they've told us and what they can see, the issues that really occur in the community today are, where Savage, Prior Lake, and Shakopee come together at that 169 ramp, and it's been worsened because of other actions in the community, and then it bottles up on that, on 169, which is not in Shakopee. And so I think the goal here is to hopefully get the Met Council to look at a coordinated plan to say, look, the county says this is an issue for all of their cities, and here's where the choke point is. And I think anyone who drives on it a daily basis can see exactly where it is, when they have it relined, and then all of a sudden it goes back to two lanes, it's a bumper to bumper.
And that's north of the bridge, we talk about the bridge a lot, but I travel it every day, too, and, and actually, I take it to the south, so I see it in the south, and you come south on 169, just across 494, and you have the same thing in reverse that we have down here, because you have a flyover bridge from going west on 494, you have, of course, emerging lane coming as you go east on 494 and exit to 169, so I'm driving in two lanes, and I get right there, just south of there, and all of a sudden it's four lanes merging in, and the same thing, what's the first crossover street, or big interchange, you know, and then it goes from three lane, come four to three to two, and you're out of business. And that's really exactly where, then it just starts to back up and...
It's faster to take 35W south and pay the impasse fee.
But the southbound 169 is actually better than the northbound, because if you're coming south, you take the flyover on 494, you're, you're two lanes, you got the one that drops off at, at a bridge, and soon as you get across the bridge, it opens up and adds two more lanes, and one of which dumps off on 101 or flies over to 13.
To Savage, so you're dispersing traffic.
Right.
And, and you're right on that, but it, I do think everybody points at the bridge, and I'll say it's 21 funneling up from one lane, from South Bridge, one lane, coming up into that with a lot of traffic, and that's from Prior Lake and us, and then the, the bridge itself, but the coming together, I'd say it's the section just north of the bridge to 494 where it's two lanes, but Steve, you want to jump in here?
I, I think I need to, talking about transportation, I would like to add a couple of points about the, the reverse movement from 101 to southbound 169. The county road 83, a regional improvement, changing that to a divided four lane, that will help kind of supplement that movement, or, or take the place of it. And I would also add, all of these issues that we're talking about, they're known by Met Council, they're known by MinDOT, so it's going to take the partners of, of south of the river, with the county, and with the other municipalities, to continue to be the sounding voice through the 169 corridor group, through the regional solicitations for funding, through corridors of commerce. We were close with, with a couple of the improvements, working with the county at this last solicitation, so it'll, it'll, this is good that we know about these issues that Mr. Kurski talked about in our plan, we, we know where all the issue areas are, so now it's, we just need to be that consistent voice, working with MinDOT and all the funding. A couple other components would be different modes of, of travel. It takes us as a city to, to accommodate some of this land use, to ensure we keep developers in check with having a good travel demand management plan where they're using different modes of transportation and taking that into consideration, bikes, buses, and, and all those amenities that go with these developments, otherwise it, it won't work. You know, we need to work with Chan Hassan to support funding for 101 going north across the river. Hopefully, Hennepin County will get done with their road on the north side of the river here, sooner than later, and 41 in a Chask, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, without being redundant, so it's good that we know about all these issues, we can't forget about them, we need to be the voice, and the leaders, to, to really promote and get some of these projects done, to support what this plan says for in Shakopee, because I can tell you, the other communities aren't going to sit on their, their haunches and say, nope, 169 is broke, therefore, we're not going to develop and expand. Every other community is going to move forward, so I would encourage you to, to, to help support those transportation efforts, so we can move forward with these.
So, so is our position that we're not going to highlight these known problem areas in this document, and we're going to let Scott County do it for us?
No, Mayor and Council, they're highlighting in this document, so Scott County did the transportation planning for all of the cities and the county together, and as Mr. Leelahog has mentioned, there's no big surprises in here, everyone knows where the capacity issues are, it's a question of Scott County and the cities, working with MinDOT and the other partners to move some of these projects along, because everyone knows, I think Mr. Leelahog's comment that, you don't think Mankato is going to grow, and guess what, all those people are coming down 169, Jordan's going to grow, and they're all coming down 169, so it's not just Shakopee residents kind of trapped on our road system, it's everybody. And so it's not a Shakopee issue, it's a regional issue, and it's going to have to be addressed regionally, and the Met Council, and MinDOT, and the county, you're all going to have to work with the cities on a long-term solution.
And I think, Matt, you sit on that coalition board, and the impact of moving goods and services along that corridor, and it, you know, all the way down to Mankato, what do they talk about, 60% of all the grain out of southwestern Minnesota comes right through this, through that channel, and the impact, so, keep pounding away, and if...
There's other solutions, it's just not a one thing fixes at all. I mean, if you wanted, if Jordan wanted to upgrade their crossing, Bell Plain upgraded their crossing, if all, everybody updated their crossings and took some of that load off, all of it would help, so.
Okay.
Now, we had this discussion 10 years ago, the last time we did this comp plan, and you just don't see a whole lot of improvement, and you start wondering at what point...
Well, it, it all gets down to money at the Fed or state level, and...
It's down to priorities, they got plenty of money, it's just a matter of priorities.
And Mayor and Council will point out, so the other thing that H R and A found is, contrary to a lot of the cities they're studying, if you look at our employment numbers, so population increases by 25,000, households increase by 9,000, but employment will actually go up 13,000, almost 14,000. That's because their belief and their discussion with local companies and the regional markets is that we still will be kind of the Scott County engine for employment, and that, that will continue, and with the growth you see in the West End, there'll be some... will continue and with the growth you see in the West End, there'll be some major employers relocating here.
So I saw this chart too and I, I've always said we had about 20,000 jobs and I was always looking for that number, well, uh, 25,7, but on our way to, you know, really a, uh, 32 and, um, you know, that no other community in Scott County has that number. Um, pretty impressive, I think, and those types of things can help in our community. We can all do our part or we can attract these businesses and whatnot and have them expand and do well, then we could take some cars off the traffic, off the road if, if some, if you, people got a job in the community and that, a little bit here or there.
I think it was, uh, Mr. Reynolds and I that threatened to go out on the bridge at 1 o'clock in the morning with a couple of rollers, wasn't it, and next thing you know it got restripped. Apparently, you know?
They were worried more about you than me, Matt.
Right.
All right, um, Joe?
Uh, yes, mister, there's a few left. Oops. Okay.
Uh-oh.
Uh, all right, so a few other, um, high priority recommendations in the comp plan, which will likely be seeing some action, um, later this year, early next year. Um, so the Innovation Center, this is an RFP that's been out, um, and so this is an idea that really this could be opportunity to leverage, um, many economic development goals within the plan, including establishing an industrial extension, so this could be an idea of a place where, um, again, small businesses could work and work to build in Shakopee, um, as industrial businesses. An advanced economy quarter, so this could kinda be the, um, the anchor to an advanced economy quarter, again, to grow businesses in Shakopee, to get that employment here in Shakopee, so you see less out commuting in the mornings and in commuting in the evenings. Including, uh, co-working, shared working spaces, um, these are spaces where, um, an individual or a company will rent out small areas within a larger area, um, for working, whether, you know, whether you work at, say, Best Buy and a couple days a week you don't wanna drive all the way to Richfield, maybe you can have a co-working space in Shakopee and, again, alleviate traffic issues potentially in the future. And finally, again, embracing future market changes, um, kinda going back to that co-working space, these are huge, this is something that kinda popped up five years ago and now you see them everywhere and they're filling up as fast as they build them. Um, and so kind of getting in and then be part of that cutting-edge new, um, new market changes to really then drive employment in Shakopee and keep those people here and keep them from driving across the bridge as much as we can. Um, in addition, um, develop incentive policies for affordable housing, um, so the first kinda step of that is to adopt a fair housing policy. This is a requirement, uh, to receive funds in the, from the Met Council's Livable Communities Act. This is an act that regularly gives out multi-million dollar grants to projects throughout the region, um, whether they're affordable or their workforce or there's something, a component of them, which the Met Council through a solicitation process deems appropriate for funding, um, so this is something that you'll be seeing soon. And this is something that could help Shakopee with its affordable workforce housing issues with the Amazons down here and a lot of incommuting from, um, other communities. In addition, um, a complete strategic plan for the next three to five years, um, so that's an idea of, uh, I think strategic plans have been done kind of annually and to kind of expand those to a little longer, uh, idea for sort of being one year every three to five years. Um, a complete streets policy, so staff will be working engineering and planning and does, and developing a street design policy and standards that kinda balance transportation modes, um, throughout the community. A disaster response resiliency plan, so this is the idea of, uh, plan how a city reacts to extreme events, whether they're natural, um, an extreme storm event, a flood, um, a chemical spill, a man-made accident or something that happens in the city, to have a plan in place to know exactly what we should be doing in those situations of extreme distress. Um, also a community engagement policy, so the idea here is to create an engagement policy that is, um, uniform throughout all city departments, so you don't have one department doing different, um, strategies in another department and you could have community issues, um, based upon maybe one is different or however that works and just keep, keeping a uniform, um, face for the city, so everyone, um, sees the city in the same way, no matter what department they're working with. And then finally, again, that annual report update on envision Shakopee and the city's progress through, um, to meeting these recommendations and goals within the plan. So every year, um, coming back and having a discussion similar to this, where we talk about what was, what has happened in the previous year and what is looking, uh, next for the next year. And so kinda, these are, these are kinda the highest priority, uh, recommendations within the plan and these are some things that you'll be seeing in the next, uh, couple of months to a year from, from today. And with that, that is the end of the presentation.
Some of those items that you just mentioned, uh, you know, really after it gets adopted here and then the zoning changes and the plug-in, the AUAR and, and the Innovation Center, the affordable housing, the, the, the streets, a living, working document unlike, I think, our, our comp plans of the past. And I like the idea, the annual review to look at where it is, where it's going, what's working, what's not, I think, uh, but it looks like there's a lot of work still ahead of us, uh, from what you outlined, Joe.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, correct. And I, I wanna say on the, on the land use element, I think, um, an idea, my building in that flexibility to land use, I think we're hoping to avoid kinda the comp plan amendment madness that happened over the last pre, couple of years, um, in the city, I think we had over a dozen in a year, I think the Met Council was, um, had issues with that. So the idea of a, a, a land use plan that, that better plans for the future and is less prescriptive in its designations, um, you know, a land use, a comp plan amendment could take, and could add upwards of two to three months to a development project and sometimes that could make them untenable. And so I think it's important to have flexibility in how we work with our plan.
Councilor Whiting?
No, I agree with, uh, with a lot of your comments, uh, I wanna thank the staff for putting so much time into it, I know this document is, is much different from what we've seen in the past and, and I know, uh, it's been staff's goal and, and my goal and many of our goals to make this document more something that doesn't sit on a shelf and something we're using. The living document, I think you mentioned that, um, I like the idea of the land use plan. There are a few questions I have, um, before I talk about that though, I, the, the aspect of the community engagement that we put into this is, is incredible. We really should be proud of what we've put together here and we're all gonna have some concerns and questions and I, and I hope we get a chance to address them tonight. Um, last time we put this out, um, I had these tabs still in my, my book and we're gonna say, well, we're just gonna get it out to the surrounding communities and we'll talk about them at a future date and I hope this is the time we can at least address a few of these, I, I have one of my tabs taken out, so I got one of them answered, but, uh, is that what we'd like to do now?
Well, we can, um, you know, we, we can talk about different pieces of this. Um, I brought our second comp plan, the, I believe this is the second one from 1991 and, uh, pretty stale document here. Um, it's interesting about the, you bring up the community engagement, you know, there was no survey back in 91, it was the council, the planning commission, but actually they set up a, a board, so they had 12 citizens to sit on a board to help put this together. You look at today, we did, um, you know, what it was, 3,200 people involved, uh, you did, uh, four or five surveys, you brought this to 10, 12 events, you had 12 different organizations that you put it out to outside of jurisdictions, um, the, the engagement, this is, you know, stuff like this is, uh, the 12 bold plans is really represents our citizenry more than anything, more than any other comp plan and, yes, it's our council here that we work on, but this is from our residents and that's what makes it, there are a lot of ownership. Councilor?
And Mayor, I, I was looking through this the last few days and I can remember those conversations with the community in, in different, um, settings that we had and, and it's like, oh my gosh, this is actually showing up here and, and that person's, um, concerns or what that person wanted to see was actually addressed and, and, uh, it's gonna be exciting to see what's gonna happen in the future, um, because I, I, I think that it's, it's, um, very flexible and, 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 and it's just exciting to see it going forward. There are some things that I was surprised at, but I think that will be resolved in the time coming with, with zoning and policies and, you know, this is just a real high-level look at things, so I'm, that's all I have to say.
Counselor, can you?
Um, Joe, just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work and I do, um, appreciate that it's very user-friendly, you know, it is very user-friendly, I, I love the more visuals, um, and, and again, the engagement, you know, just hearing what the community had to say, I'm very happy that, that was put into this and I appreciate all the work, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, do we, uh, I guess if we have more concerns or, Councilor, Whiting?
Uh, I think we talked a little bit about, uh, with the park and open spaces discussion and that had, also was gonna address some of the sidewalk concerns and, and, and connectivity concerns, so, uh, hopefully that could take care of a few of my, my tabs here. I am looking, I'm looking at page 92 specifically in preserving and utilizing existing assets for housing. Under item 2A, talks about, uh, allowing accessory dwelling units, cohousing, or tiny houses in a single-family residential district. I would be opposed to that, I think that would knock, uh, property values down, um, I would like to see that removed.
Where, where are you, I, I got the page, what section?
92, uh, page 92, preserve and utilize existing assets for housing.
Yeah.
Under that item 2A, in the third paragraph, allow accessory dwellings, cohousing, and tiny homes in single-family residential districts.
So having another house on your, on your lot?
Yeah, I think that drops property values and, um, I would have concerns with that. This is another sidewalk, um, it does, it recommends sidewalk and, and, uh, lighting and, and things, so it, I wanna make sure we're incorporating some of the recommendations into some of the other aspects of, of what we're talking about, specifically sidewalks. Um, now I'm on page 202.
Can we just stick to this one first?
Okay.
Yeah. Take one at a time.
Now, the, uh, accessory dwelling units, cohousing, I'm thinking of the life cycle housing where you've got an elderly parent that you're gonna set up with a little room off the back and help take care of him toward their end of life.
The granny pods.
What's that?
Granny pods.
Yeah. And I think that's a good thing, I, I, I actually am kind of one of the, all of the above, if, if, if there's somebody that wants to build smaller houses on smaller lots and there's a market need for it, so be it. Trailer parks are another one, uh, I'm, I'm an advocate of them because, you know, they are somebody's livelihood.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but I think on the existing zoning, if that was set aside as a new zoning where it's all tiny houses or something, that would one-
Well, we're gonna be going through all, changing all the zoning in nine months.
Counselor Brennan?
Did we talk about the accessory dwelling units like a year ago when we turned it down and?
Yeah, we did, uh, yes, Counselor, we did, uh, we were specifically looking at dwellings that would be the granny pods, that would not be plumbed, um, and that would be removed after a particular period of time.
Is that, is that what this is referring to?
So, Mayor and Council, you, you have allowed, so the Lennar subdivision, I don't know how many they've built, but you allowed cohousing there as a-
As a new development.
As a part of a new development and I think-
But it's built into the house, so it's part of the house in the Lennar area, isn't it?
Yeah, and I think what we've been seeing in some of the larger lot in other communities, if you have a, a large lot where you have a small garage, people are tearing those garages down and building that cohousing for their adult child that's had to move back or whatever, it provides an opportunity to have, um, I, I know a lot of communities require, and I wrote one ordinance to actually require the person living there had to be a, a relative.
So, I think the wording, you know, the, the tiny homes versus, uh, granny flat above your garage, I'd be, I'm a, I'm okay with that type of situation.
Well, I, I have that type of situation, but it's not a tiny house in my backyard. So I, I just, I think that terminology, maybe it's just verbiage.
I don't think the tiny, tiny house was, in this wording is to be on a regular lot with a regular house, I think that's a separate-
Well, that's not what it says, it says allow accessory dwelling units, cohousing, or tiny homes in single-family residential districts.
Yeah.
It's, it's listed under infill development, so that would be like a-
So if there was a non-conforming lot that you couldn't build a standard house on, you could build a small house.
Well, I'd agree with that, but I wouldn't agree with changing, putting it in current, current residential zoning.
Right, I put a container box in my backyard and-
Well, wait a minute, what happens if you have an area that the land use is guided for single-family residential, there's nothing there today, and a developer came forward and said, I wanna put in 40-foot wide by eight, 80-foot lots with smaller-sized houses, entry-level houses?
Well, we'd have to look at it, but I think, um, I would, I would think that'd be fine, I'm just saying it, it was in current, so that it doesn't affect current property values. You know, if we take a, a downtown residential and start subdividing lots and making smaller houses on, on those lots, and it's been done in the past, I know, some lots.
It wouldn't, they, the theory wouldn't be to subdivide it, put up a accessories, you know, something on there, but, you know, I think if we're talking, uh, later, I'm sure we'll talk about affordable housing and that's the exact same thing, we talk about density and impact, but, um, narrower lots with a little to, taller house that goes front to back, um, actually, it's kinda funny because there was, is a development in Chaska that was built about 15 years ago, I believe, that did that exact same thing, they had alleys and so this was a narrow house, two-story, front porch, but it was taller and longer, right, because it had a narrower lot. And, um, um, I was trying to find it and I couldn't because I wanted to see how, how it's standing the test of time, um, and then look at those values of how they did.
And Mayor and Council, you have that here in Dean Lakes.
Huh?
You have that existing in Dean Lakes where, we were actually looking at the other day, you have a mixture of townhomes with private alleys maintained by an association and then you have single-family homes on Varanale lots, but the rear, it, the house goes from front to back with a garage and all that space is maintained by that association. And if you look at the resales, there's been no issues there.
I think it's, it's a great idea, just not in infill development in, in historic or, or regular. So I guess we have consensus on that?
I think the devil is gonna be in the details in your zoning, not necessarily your comp plan.
Could be.
Right. Let's see, continue?
The, the other one, page, uh, 202. And I, I just, uh, it's under 1H and I'll read it, it says, establish targets for minimum number of employees per acre in commercial and industrial districts to maintain and grow a healthy, job-focused economy and efficient use of land. Now, I don't disagree with that in theory, but there's companies and businesses that come in that need a lot of space and a lot of land because of the type of their business, so you can put a target on it, but I just don't, I, I don't know how we can justify that in, in many instances that we can say, this, this is a two-acre parcel, commercial or industrial, you need to have so many employees because it, it's just such a wide scope.
And Mayor and Council, I'll agree in concept and theory, but I think we had a phone call the other day with a company that was searching for data centers. So data centers take up huge amounts of land and employ five or six people. And so from an economic development strategy, is that something you wanna support? Because they're occurring in more rural communities because there tend to be bigger taxpayers, but they don't generate any jobs.
They're utility users.
They're big utility users.
And they, they want a special rate, so I know we have one in our community, but, um-
And the other one, I'll tell you, is a mineral company in town here that has four employees and they occupy 250,000 square feet. And so I think one of the issues raised in the comp plan is, you know, we only have so much land, you can't print anymore and we're taking a big chunk of Jackson Township, do you want, from a policy standpoint- taking a big chunk of Jackson Township. Do you want, from a policy standpoint, to do a million-square-foot building that employs 10 people, or do you want a 200,000-square-foot building that employs 500 people? I mean, that's really, I think the devil's in the details, but just from a high-level policy standpoint, what is the aspiration of the community?
I don't disagree. I just think it's hard to...
I don't agree with Jay. I don't, I wanted to open up a business on 20 acres and employ just myself. Who's government to tell me I can't do it?
It's a target, but, you know, it depends on the tax. I don't think we can tell how many employees you can handle.
I can see having a, not giving any assistance to that type of operation because there's no benefit, but collecting the taxes on that million-foot building is...
That's what we're looking for.
So, Mayor and Counsel, I'll tell you, that's the other thing we found looking the other day. So our more intensive industrial buildings pay as much as four times in property tax. There's a similar building that's basically got three or four people.
Right. So it gets down to, you know, you talk about a building, but it really, we talk about values a lot on what's the value of your house or your business, but really, the underlying aspect is tax capacity. So a warehouse has a, that, you know, doesn't manufacture anything, something in, something out, you know, doesn't, compared to a true manufacturer like an Emerson or a, that actually, that's where you get much higher tax capacity. You could have the same, actually, you could have roughly the same value, but a higher cognitance and tax capacity out of that building. And, you know, as long as you generate the tax capacity, right?
I think the bigger underlying factor is free markets. Like I said, if a millionaire wants to build himself a building and employ himself-
Park his cars in there.
Who's government to tell him he can't do it? Seriously?
Let's move along.
We're sitting here talking about having government say, "Nope, you can't build a building in our community because you don't employ enough people." Seriously? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I think Mayor and Counsel, it comes down to what the zoning is. So we have zoning regulations right now. Let's say you can do this kind of activity. So if you wanted to build a million-square-foot basketball court in the industrial area, you can't because it's not allowed use.
I could buy a piece of property in industrial park, build a building, and let it sit empty, right?
Absolutely. You just can't use it as a basketball court.
Empty is less than one employee.
All right. Let's move along here.
207 talks about the tiny houses again in promoting infill development. In chapter six here, under 6D. And then I'm looking at the page, it's going to be 301 or 302. It's the Musa chart, and I don't know that we can do anything about moving up any of the Musa line with the Met Council. I think that's their prerogative, but they could really hamstring us on any kind of development in the West End by not moving the Musa line.
They absolutely can.
So I don't know if we can do anything about that or not.
So Mayor and Counsel, I just checked with Joe. So the Musa line's not kind of the bloodline it used to be, so we can request that line to be moved without any issue.
Okay.
We had thought that was going to be some critical path, but the Met Council, because of all the work that Mr. Lilahog's shop has done on the sewer side and with the AUAAR, I mean, the big issue is kind of out in that area, they said it wasn't going to be an issue.
They usually move that Musa line as you develop, like the line is here and your development is here, and as you develop toward it, they typically move that right along with the development.
But they haven't used it as a fence.
No.
Okay.
You don't hear much more about the Musa because it's as much anymore in communities because it's more based off of availability of the sewer, which this is it. But I don't hear the word Musa anymore. You know, we've heard that we can do some things in the West End for now, and we have enough capacity. What the big picture is, is they're looking at, you know, down the line, right? And so, and I don't hear the word Musa. I hear, well, you have enough, we have enough capacity now on the Chaska Interceptor to do it.
For our fans at home watching us on TV, the Musa is the Metropolitan Urban Service Areas, which kind of controls where your sewer and water are.
Very good.
Mayor and Counsel, if I could add, so for the Musa line, you, so the request to change the line is similar to a comprehensive plan amendment. So the Met Council, it's the same kind of review process. For the Musa expansion, it's the same as the comprehensive plan amendment process. So it's something that can be changed. It takes a little longer, but it's not set in stone.
That's easy to do.
All right.
That covers my tabs here, so I'm looking forward to seeing some movement on those items.
Counselor Brennan?
I think I already said what I needed to say. I don't have any corrections. I just think going into the zoning, it'll be a different thing.
Counselor Lehman?
I raised mine all in the past. I'm not going to rehash them.
All right. I think one thing that Joe brought up in trying to build a document for 2040 and long-term planning strategically, long-term planning is fine. I really enjoy this. I do think over time plans change though. And so when you say we're trying to eliminate or have less of those amendments, we've had some in our community. Now, I don't think we've had a lot, but also the development patterns have changed significantly. And what was long, you know, 20 years ago that you'd planned, or 30 years ago that you planned, and this would be great, and then nothing happens, and I'm not saying that that was a mistake, that was good planning back then, but then today, you know, 2020, the reality has changed that that, now there could be a different use there that's going to cause a change, rather than just see no development. So where appropriate. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and don't forget, this is a forward-leaning document at this point, and we've designed into it the coming back every year to hopefully get in front of those issues as we see them developing. No plan, you know, there's an old term in the military, you know, the best-laid plans are thrown out the window immediately upon first contact with the enemy. You know, the point being is that plans aren't static. They will change. They'll ebb and flow based upon a myriad of different issues. But the key is, is we've built that into this process to hopefully get in front of those every year and say, "Okay, this is what we're seeing. Let's have these discussions now, and then if we need to, we can incorporate them into the plan."
Counselor Contras, did you?
No, I just, page 36 on the last sentence, there, T-H-E-I-R. Just a little typo.
Good night.
Mayor and council members, so the grammar and everything is still being worked. So we have until May 1st to submit to the Met Council. So the big changes, any substantial changes are done. It's just, yeah, there are, yep. So appreciate that, though.
Well, great. I think this is a vastly different document than comp plans of the past. It's more readable. It's understandable. Yes, there's a lot here. It has action steps to achieve the goals, goals and strategies, the concepts, the 12 big ideas. The community involvement is hands down. When I went to events or I participated in a couple of the gathering, community gatherings, to see the turnout and the people that are really engaged, I thought that was great. I think it really represents our community and the folk.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, it was a directed point to try and get to our diverse community, too.
Yeah.
You know, and I really like to see that, so that everybody, there was an effort to try and get different points of view from different aspects of our community. And again, the 12 ideas, it's awesome. So, good stuff.
Can I say one more thing? I've read through some of the old comprehensive plans that we have in place now, and they're really difficult. And I think this is a great opportunity for anybody, our next generation of council, to come in and say, "Oh, I know, I understand where they're going and I understand what's coming next and where we're going with it." So when we're turning over here and people won't have to go, "What? What are they talking about? What were they doing?" And I think this is very clear.
So the action before us tonight is to actually have a resolution authorizing the submission of the 2040 comp plan to our Met Council. Counselor Whiting?
Are we going to address some of those questions we brought up tonight? Are we going to take a look at some of those items that we talked about tonight and adjust them?
Mayor and Counsel, we'll take a look at them. As Joe said, we have a drop-dead deadline of May 1st, so his next week or two is going to be spending fixing up typos, changing some of your comments, and getting it done so we can get it over to them. So to, excuse me, to Mr. Whiting's credit here, he's become an expert in design, which is what this was done in. And so we had to get a license for it, and he's been working pretty much around the clock. And we did probably 40 or 50 of these maps because one of the things the Met Council pointed out, and you can't see it, but this is down to the parcel. So it's more exacting than you think. And so he had to go through and address every single parcel in the city to make sure there weren't split land uses and that everything conformed and could meet their guidelines. So it's been a monumental task, and to his credit, he hasn't run away. So he's still standing here.
Appreciate your effort. That in-design talent might come in handy in other places, but...
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, Jay, I really think your concerns need to be addressed at the zoning part of it.
Well, I think we're having another swing of the ax, you know.
That is, what sidewalk connections we're going to make or where, or if we're going to, is going to be a discussion on a sidewalk connection policy, more of an internal item than it is. All this is telling the Met Council is that overview of, we're going to try to make these connections, whether they're regional trails or a dead-end trail, two dead-end trails that just need a middle part, or two sidewalks. We're going to try to make connections. We're not being specific on the sidewalk on Atwood and Third. That specificity is going to happen when we have the discussion on our sidewalk policy.
I understand. I just, when we get these overarching goals-
Same when you, when you talk about teeny houses, maybe on tiny lot, or smaller lots in a development, in a single-family development. We're telegraphing to the Met Council that we're looking at all options for affordable housing. When it actually comes back to looking at specific guidelines for single-family residential or whatever, any zone, that's when we're going to have these discussions and decide, do we want to allow that? Do we not allow that?
About the policy?
In the zoning. And the three votes is going to take that one way or the other. So, you know, if I'm wrong in reading this incorrectly, you correct me, but that's kind of how I'm seeing it.
Mayor and Counsel, you're correct. So the 2030 comp plan, the big mistake, which we've learned, you know, over and over from the Met Council with a baseball bat, is we took the zoning and made the land use. They said, newsflash, it's make the land use, figure out the zoning, because the zoning is where the local municipality gets down to the nits and the, does that occur here? Does it occur over there? It doesn't happen at all. So I think, as Counselman Lehman said, we painted kind of the big picture, the devil's in the details, and the details will be the zoning. I think, your question, the sidewalks, the city administrators made it really clear to myself and Mr. Lilahog that by fall, we're going to have a sidewalk policy we're going to bring to you that says, here's where it goes and here's where it doesn't go, and then you all have to make the decision. Because that's becoming a bigger and bigger issue throughout the community, that people are going, "Look, I moved here and I can't walk somewhere." So we're going to come back with a policy, and then you guys can look at it and change it, do whatever you want.
And it's not going to be easy.
Right.
Because there are portions of this community-
We just-
-that do not want sidewalks for whatever reason. And, you know, and so then you have the competing, well, Jimmy can't get to school without walking in the road because grandma doesn't want a sidewalk in her. So that's going to be fun. Good luck.
Right. Counselor Lehman?
The one problem I have with this is if you wanted to buy a piece of property and you look at this land use map and you pick out this piece of property that's for sale, and it says it's, you know, whatever you're using in here, mixed something or-
Mixed industrial residential.
Whatever. How do you know what you can actually use that property for? You don't. Because today, it might be one thing, and soon as you redo all these zoning things, it's going to be something different. So you don't know. That's a hard investment to make when you don't have any clarity. Where the old way of doing it, you knew in the land use what it was designated for, because it was tied to your zoning. If it was single-family, you could build a single-family house. If it was R3, you could build R3. If it was commercial, you're going to build a commercial. And you actually had legal standing when you purchased that property because it was land-guided for a commercial, and the zoning for a commercial said you could do this. And nobody could tell you you couldn't because you met all the requirements and you had them up front. Here, this is not the case. Here, it's almost like we put a land use on it that you have to take and research to find out what that really means, and then we're telling everybody now that what it means in this is going to change 90 days later.
But Mayor and Counsel, that's not 100% accurate, so-
That's what I heard tonight.
We're going to do new zoning that reflects the comp plan, but if you have an existing use or whatever it is, and it will still remain, those property rights-
It'll be a non-conforming use.
Yeah, which in this state is as good as gold because you can keep it forever. As long as you rebuild it, unless it burns down 100-
Unless you want to finance it, right?
I would say in Minnesota, that's not that big of an issue, because if you look across the city, even under today's zoning, there's tons of non-conforming uses. There are signs for other restaurants on other restaurants' property. I mean, there's things that don't occur anywhere else because this is a very strong, non-conforming use state. So I think what we're trying to do is, going forward, whatever the use you have it is, but on particularly raw land, we're going to have a more sophisticated zoning, and from a redevelopment standpoint, we'll have a more sophisticated zoning. So I think it'll be, this is how it is in all the cities in the Met Council. We were the outlier, and so I think we're trying to follow the rules and stay out of Met Council trouble.
Counselor Whiting?
Well, I think you talked about the baseball bat, and I think we saw some of that with some of our trying, attempts to try and get things done, because things changed and we, so hopefully this new portion, the way we've had it set up, is going to help us with that. But understanding our conversation we had tonight and the way we feel about a few things, I will make a motion to offer a resolution authorizing the submission of the 2040 comp plan to the Met Council for review.
A second.
I have a motion. I have a second further discussion, discussion. You know, I'm going to say it's a great comp plan. Are there some things in here that's gone to the, gone to the Met Council? Sure. But again, I think that the citizen engagement helped develop this, and I think that's good. I would like to thank staff, Michael and your department. I also have special thanks to Eric Weiss, who really got this going and really got the community engagement. Joe, you're here now bringing this baby home, so very valuable piece of that. But I think the combination of Eric and you and the staff, that you guys have done a great job. Thank you.
I want to thank the Planning Commission, too, because they've got our back. They're another voice for us.
Yes. Very good. So noted.
No, I appreciate all the work, and I said it before, but this is an amazing plan. I hope we use it. I hope it doesn't sit on a shelf. And I think we've designed it so it can't. And mentioned the big ideas, they're all going to get done next year. I mean, it'll take a lot of planning and a lot of hard work to get the first one or two done. So I'm looking forward to that work, and it's exciting. So thanks to staff.
And this side of the house, we'd like to thank engineering, Mr. Lilahog has been invaluable, along with his team, getting a lot of this stuff done. And it's not typical, but I mean, we got kind of the nicer part of the plan done, and he was able to come on the backside and make sure it all worked from a technical standpoint.
Great work.
Motion on the table. Second, further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Very good. Item number six, Counselor Lehman. Other business?
None.
I make a motion to adjourn till next week. I make a motion to adjourn till next week, Tuesday, April 16th, at 7:00 PM. Second.
I have a motion, a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn at nine, at 8:47. All right. Thank you, everybody.